Good evening. I would like to call our meeting to order and start with a pledge of allegiance. Thank you, and now a moment of silence. Thank you. First up, we have recognitions. Dr. Heil?
All right, thank you, and good evening, everyone. Thanks for being here with us. At this time, I'm going to invite Heidi Karst, our principal from Stony Creek, to come up to the podium to talk to us about our Hare Chevrolet Teacher Spotlight. And as she's coming up, just a reminder to the crowd that every month, this program highlights three teachers and provides $1,000 to their school for student academic and extracurricular achievements. So, it's Karst, take it away.
Good evening. We have two of our three distinguished Hare Chevrolet teachers here tonight. I'm super excited to talk about them. I was looking, doing a little research. This is our seventh year to have students featured from Hare Chevrolet. So, we're super proud of that, love the partnership and the recognition that it brings to all of our schools and the dedicated educators that we have. So, I'm going to just brag a little bit about these two remarkable ladies that are here this evening. First up is Jenny Howerton, closest to me. Jenny teaches 4th grade at Stony Creek, and this is her 15th year of teaching, which I cannot believe, her 10th in Noblesville Schools. And I really liked her response to this question. I hate to read publicly, but I'm going to read it because it's so well done. When she was asked why she chose to become a teacher, Jenny said she loves seeing firsthand how learning can spark hope and confidence. Watching children light up as they grasp new ideas convinced her that helping kids grow, not just academically, but as curious, capable humans, was the work that she was meant to do each day. I just love that. Jenny has goals for her students, and she does want them to grow academically, which I know you all appreciate, but she wants them to love coming to school and to know that they're safe, cared for, and capable of amazing things. Jenny is a very, very busy young lady. She has three children of her own, so when she's not at Stony Creek teaching, she's on her way to one of these places this evening. She's out cheering on sporting events, playing in the neighborhood, relaxing in the backyard, or traveling. And lastly, Jenny was asked what makes Noblesville Schools so special, and she said it's a place where teachers and students are known, encouraged, and celebrated each and every day. So, thank you, Jenny Howerton. Mr. Jordan Murray was unable to be with us this evening. He had one of his children's birthday, and Grandma and Grandpa were in from out of state, actually. So, I'm going to talk a little bit about Jordan. Jordan is our music teacher at Stony Creek and just full of enthusiasm and energy. It's his 14th year of teaching, and he's been four at Stony Creek. When asked why he became a teacher, he wanted to help students learn to love music, like he did, and to build community with each other, which I thought was a really interesting answer for a music teacher, and it makes total sense. He said, "Advice for parents: Music is for everyone." What he likes to do outside of time, spending time with family, outside of school, rather. He likes to travel. He enjoys nature. He is actually currently writing a play, a musical, with a couple of local writers here in Noblesville. He enjoys watching basketball and football. He's a big Michigan State fan. And when asked what makes Noblesville Schools so special, he said, "It's the commitment to empowering everyone in the community to be their best." That is Mr. Murray. And last, but not least, I'm super proud to introduce Caitlin Patterson, Kate, because she's been teaching at Stony Creek her whole career, eight years at Stony Creek and student taught at Stony Creek. So, not that we don't love all of our teachers, but I always just like to get those fresh young people and keep them around as long as possible. So, soon you'll be in your 15th year of teaching and so on at Stony Creek, right? Okay. She teaches 2nd grade for us currently, and her parents were both educators. So, they inspired her to become a teacher because they helped instill a love of learning for Kate at a young age. When asked what does she want her goals for her students to be, she wants them to be kind, curious, and empowered to advocate for themselves. And she's a master of that. I see the young 2nd graders grow so much independently in her room each year. What does Kate like to do outside of school? Well, this lady does not sit around and watch Netflix, let me tell you. She loves being busy and active, and she's constantly teaching. When she's not teaching children, she's teaching adults bar class. That's why she is like an epitome of fitness. She is teaching classes, and she's going on walks with her husband, and they're two Australian shepherds, and they are adorable. When asked what makes Noblesville Schools so special, she said, "It's special because Noblesville Schools truly epitomizes creating a safe, challenging, and innovative learning environment for both students and staff." So, that is our final Chevrolet Teacher Spotlight teacher, Kate Patterson. Oh, sorry. Oh, oh, we're going to, you're going to shake, shake hands around the table. Sorry, thank you. Sorry, I forgot the handshake. We're just going to keep, keep all the great Stony Creek learning and growing happening up here tonight. We have a fairly unique presentation, as far as the number of years that I have been part of this, and we love sharing and bragging about great things that are going on at Stony Creek. But when we were trying to think of something that's truly unique that we've done, I thought, "Why have we never really shared this with the board before?" So, we are going to talk tonight about our partnership with United Way of Central Indiana. It's, it's something that we have done for a long time, and I better get back over here to my script, or I'll ramble on and on. We've actually been partnered with the United Way since 2014 at Stony Creek. And kind of what spurred the relationship in the first place is during the year 2012-13, Indiana State Department of Education started a new state assessment called I READ. And that was the first year that 3rd graders were tested on their literacy skills. So, like all the schools in Indiana, we went through that first year of testing. And after the testing results came back, it was apparent to us that some of our students needed a little more than what the data showed. We anticipated some kids to do really well and some kids to maybe struggle, but there was this kind of middle group of kids that we, we were, had a couple, like surprises or ahahs, and we had some like, "Oh, wow, that was great." And so, it was our first time to take the test. And in talking as a staff and with our interventionists and all the dedicated teachers, we thought, you know, what else do we need? What else might we need? And along came an email. We get thousands of emails, I feel like, all the time. But there was an email from the United Way of Central Indiana, and I happened to click and read, and it was talking about this program that they had called Read Up. And we were very big in volunteers and parent volunteers in our school when I started at Stony Creek. I mean, we had probably eight to 10 volunteers a day. And it was back, I've been there for a little while, it was back before, we had as many working parents as we do now, and there were a lot of typically moms that came in and volunteered and read with students, and we loved that. So, as we were talking, we learned that this partnership would provide volunteers to our school that were background-checked and that they would consistently come to our school. It wasn't just a, you know, we did a partnership with a local bank, and they sent some people for about a month, and then they needed to do their banking. And, but this was a group of volunteers that were dedicated for the long stretch. So, we took a chance, and we tried this partnership. And what we really focused on was the students that were those bubble students that you're not really sure, they're, they seem to perform pretty well one day, but maybe not the next. We don't always know where they're going to be when they get in front of an assessment. And we just knew that some of them needed confidence in themselves as readers. They needed someone to talk to about the story they were reading to process and to think. And we started with a very small group, and Matt Jacobs, who's our district data coordinator now, was our, our learning, actually, he was our instructional coach, not our learning specialist, at the time. And we brought in these volunteers, and we found books, and we partnered some students with these volunteers. And what we found was beautiful, because they created this, in an appropriate way, intimate relationship as readers. The adult mentor worked with the same student a couple of days a week for 45 minutes to an hour in the library with a book or books, and they talked about them, and they grew to know one another, some of their quirks and habits and what they enjoyed, and it just blossomed. And the data was phenomenal. The students passed I READ. And that just gave us that extra person. Our teachers, as you all know, are the best. They're really hardworking. They're dedicated. They're out learning constantly, science of reading, professional development, you name it. But just that extra person in some of these students' world really made a huge impact that's sometimes hard to quantify with just data. But we did have the results. They did pass I READ. And so, since that time, many, many students at Stony Creek have gotten that reading practice, that mentor, that relationship, and those positive connections with someone in their community. During this past school year, the 24-25 school year for United Way of Central Indiana, there were 262 volunteers working with 316 students in 23 schools in seven central Indiana counties. Some of that data is going to be on a slide coming up, but I just thought you might want to hear it and see it twice, because it's not a huge group, but I'm super proud of Stony Creek for being amongst the group and having done it for so long. We had invited to join us in the presentation tonight Julie Kilger, and she is the United Way's Impact Senior Director. We've worked with her, like, a long time. Sheri is going to talk, and I don't want to steal her thunder, but we've worked with Julie for quite a while. She's stayed consistent with the United Way. And her partnership led to this great relationship with the volunteers year after year. And then, we get this email that they have some grants. Schools that we're partnered with, you know, "Might, might you have an interest in some money for some great literacy things happening at your school?" If you put Sheri and I in a room together and say, "There's money," we're going to have some fun, and it's going to be really quality family engagement. I think Dr. Heil was even able to visit one of our events that we hosted. So, we have done a few years of these grants at Stony Creek selfishly. I mean, we just were doing it because the grant was there. We happened to win the grant. We had these great programs. But this young lady, Mrs. McGovern, partnered with her colleagues, the other teacher librarians across the district, and they got a rather large grant this school year for all seven elementaries. So, again, I'm not going to steal her thunder, and she won't want to take all the credit, but she is a big part of it because of this relationship, because she's written grants, because they know that she's going to do good, quality work for the kids in Noblesville. Tied to literacy, I'm so proud of, you know, just what all we've been able to do. So, Sheri is currently our teacher librarian at Stony Creek, but she's also considered the coordinator for the Read Up program at Stony Creek. And she's helping facilitate all the volunteers. Today was their first day. So many of them come back year after year after year to Stony Creek, which I also love, because we're just having that community outreach piece and some new ones, too. So, we always love to have new ones. And I'm going to let her talk about all the details, and we also have some esteemed guests. We have one of our volunteers and a Stony Creek 4th grader who was in the Read Up program last year. Since it's just started this year, we wanted to get a testimonial from a 4th grader, and Sydney is going to do great.
Oh, I'm going to bring this way down, way down. Thank you. All right. So, Julie was actually going to be here tonight, but unfortunately had a sick child. So, I'm going to kind of do her part, too. So, and that's just to tell you a little bit about the program. So, as you can look at this slide, Read Up is a signature program of the United Way of Central Indiana that pairs volunteers with 3rd grade students to build reading and writing skills. Schools host three sessions a day, or excuse me, three days a week with volunteers spending one hour helping students. In 2025, a little over 40% of Indiana's 3rd grade students scored at or above proficient on the I Learn English Language Arts. And then during the 24-25 school year, we had 262 volunteers that served 316 students. Of those students, 95% showed measurable literacy growth, and among those attending at least 50 sessions, had 98%. United Way partnered with the University of Indianapolis Center for Excellence and Leadership to align Read Up with the Science of Reading last year and piloted the updated model in Marion and Boone County over the past year. So, with Read Up, the program runs September through May with a holiday celebration in December and an end-of-the-year event in May. So, Stony Creek. Stony Creek has hosted Read Up since the 2014-2015 year. I took over as a coordinator 2015-2016. It was a little shocking when I realized I've been doing this for 10 years, to not plan on that. And then, we've supported over 70 students and achieved over 90% I READ passing rate. But to see Read Up's impact, let's hear from Sydney Atkins, a former Read Up student, and I'm going to ask her just a few questions. You ready? Come on up. Would you recommend Read Up to other students? Why or why not?
I would recommend Read Up because it helps students who find it difficult to read in their classrooms. Read Up helps kids feel more comfortable and have fun with, reading with your mentor.
So, what did you enjoy about Read Up last year?
I enjoyed how I could go down and pick a book instead of my mentor choosing one for me. I also liked how I could choose a book from pretty much any part of the library, but I especially liked the picture books. I'd like to share how reading was kind of like learning how to ride my bike. Before, I didn't have it. I never thought I'd need it. But the more I didn't have it, I was like, "Wow, I'm going to need this." So, I went to Read Up every Tuesday and Thursday, and I learned how to read. And then, soon after, I learned how to ride my bike, and now I can ride my bike and read all the signs.
Okay, thank you. All right.
That was amazing. Wow, good job.
She is, she has been practicing for days.
That was awesome.
Today, she walked in and said, "This is what I'm going to wear today. I'm so excited."
She looks perfect.
She did very well. So, also, too, we have here Dave Hanson, and he has been four years, five years? Fifth years. And so, he would like to share, share with you, too.
I'm going to move back, but I think you're okay. That's fine. I'll have to lift that up probably a little bit, because I can probably talk a lot enough without this. But, well, first of all, thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk about Read Up. Sydney, that's a tough act to follow. I'm going to read more than you are probably in the process. But, yeah, this is my fifth year volunteering, starting this year. I did two years in IPS at School 70, and then moved up to Stony Creek. I live in Westfield, so the minute I saw something was available in Noblesville, that was great. A little closer drive for me. So, and I have loved this program for a number of reasons. I've worked with kids of all backgrounds. You know, English as a first language, English as a second language. I've worked with kids that were kindergarten level, reading in 3rd grade, all the way up to proficient, but just maybe had some confidence building. So, I've, it, and the common theme is all the kids show marked improvement in that process, no matter where they start. So, it's just, it's amazing to be a part of that as someone who isn't a teacher but has novel ideas that maybe someday I can teach, which I can't, but this is my chance to do it. I think there's a few things that's important about Read Up that makes it particularly great as a program. I'm surprised there are not more school systems in Hamilton County embracing Read Up. Kind of blows my mind, because it, one, it, clearly, the literacy improvement is a big part of it, but there is a huge impact on self-confidence. There's such a mental health aspect. Kids learn more about connection, social interaction, engaging with adults, and, and just, and just becoming better, all those things. And the confidence piece is what ultimately, to me, is just as big an impact as learning how to read better and comprehend better. So, hopefully, more school systems will embrace it. It's been awesome as a volunteer. I would say, as a volunteer, the other piece that's great about Read Up is it's easy to volunteer, easy to sign up. The training is great. The program evolves. It gets better. We're very prepared. There's lots of flexibility in the times. So, it's super easy for someone who, you know, works an intense, full-time job to still be able to do this and make an impact. So, Sheri's been fantastic. I know Sheri. We lived in the same neighborhood for a long time. So, she's been awesome to work with. There's a lot of work that she has to do to coordinate it all, but it's totally worthwhile. I just appreciate the chance to, to share how it's impacted me. So, thank you.
In addition to Read Up, we have been fortunate to receive several grants through the United Way that allowed us to bring unique literacy experiences to our staff, students, and families. Our very first grant supported a night of mystery and magic. Each family received a You Choose mystery book with 48 different paths and 25 possible endings. Our goal was to inspire the students and families to continue reading at home, exploring different choices, discovering new endings, and sparking meaningful conversations. The evening featured a cakewalk-style game, but instead of cakes, students actually won a mystery book. Each student also received a deck of cards, and the magician Jeff Lozier taught them a simple card trick that they could perform for their friends and family. And then, while enjoying card cookies, students and families explored book displays and shared in conversation. Our next grant brought World Read a Loud Day, and I have to say that slow, you cannot say that really fast, by the way, World Read a Loud Day to life with a playful twist. We kicked off the day with a staff-friendly feud competition. Then, teachers read the book Jumanji that they were given, a story about a magical board game that brings jungle elements to life to their classes, connecting it to the theme. Students then had the opportunity to take that book home to share with their families. And then, throughout the day, the students engaged in educational games, activities, and books. The celebration culminated in a lively family and toy night that featured the four events that are highlighted on the slide. And then, like Heidi had said, our most recent award. We were awarded a grant that allowed all seven Noblesville elementary schools to participate in a sports-themed year. This initiative includes guest speakers, which we've had a couple already, a book club, a 2nd grade field trip, monthly library activities, curriculum integration, and community partnerships, making literacy a team effort across the district. Whether it's a weekly opportunity like Read Up, a one-night family event, a day-long celebration, or a year-long initiative, we are deeply grateful to the United Way for their continued partnership. Thank you also to Dr. Heil and the Noblesville School Board for allowing us the opportunity to share these successes tonight. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. I think, I think the most impressive thing is, Sydney, you did, you did amazing. Great job. Great job.
I just, I have one question, Sydney. You said that you've learned how to read better, and you've learned how to ride your bike. Are you riding your bike while you're reading? Please say no. Great job. What an awesome program and opportunity.
Yes. What a, amazing, amazing. And it's great that all the other elementary schools are going to be involved in at least part of it, right?
Can you, can you say how students are selected for this, to participate in the program? Is it?
So, we work with our learning specialists and the teachers, and basically, what we're looking at is the bubble kids, the kids that we're just a little concerned about, that there are other programs that have been placed about.
Makes sense.
So, yeah, so that's the ones that we're doing, but it's really working with a lot of the data from the teachers and the learning specialists.
Right, right.
And we changed it, and then we changed it, and then we decided, for how many to share. And we've been very fortunate. When we first started, we had five Read Up tutors. Now, we have 19.
Wow.
That's fantastic.
Sure, this will be their first year, and they are starting with five, and hopefully, they'll work out. And when I say 19, we have a couple tutors that actually do twice a week. So, we are very lucky to have as many as we can.
Yeah, I mean, that goes to show, you know, we all get inundated with spam emails. I mean, check your email. They're all worth checking, and, you know. I mean, what a great opportunity that just kind of landed in your lap. That's fabulous.
Yeah, I can't believe I didn't know you guys were doing this. I'm so glad you presented this. This is amazing.
Yes, yes, yeah.
I love, I, I know that we've, you know, we have serious, like, security, you know, at our schools, but I love that we are having more volunteers come in, because I think this adult interaction with kids is so, like he was mentioning, is so great. Like, it's, it's just amazing. So, thank you for doing it. It's really cool. Oh, it's so great. It's amazing.
Right, right.
It's a win-win.
It is.
Interacting with older folks is great for kids. So, like, it's great for both. I mean, it's just.
It's amazing.
No, you are not. You are like 25.
And I can honestly say, too, I was talking to Sydney's teacher today, and we've talked about the confidence that Sydney, like, at the beginning of last year to where she was at the end of the year, and for her to come up and do it with the confidence that we have seen from Sydney.
Right, yeah.
It's amazing.
I mean, just learning how to read in general does so, like you mentioned, does so much for your confidence. And then, to learn how to ride your bike in addition to that, wowzers. That's, that's crazy. Good job.
Yes, thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Got to wear the tennis shoes with it.
Setting this up. Yes, yes. See you tomorrow.
Yes, it's good. Yes, we'll see you tomorrow. Oh, comfy shoes tomorrow. Gosh, that was amazing.
That was amazing.
All right, next up, we have our monthly report on our strategic plan, and take it away, Julie.
Hi, good evening.
Good luck following that.
I know. Although I loved a lot of the things that Dave said are going to coincide with some of the things I'm going to talk about tonight in terms of mental health. So, again, I'm reporting on compassionate care and support, and this is Noblesville's commitment to the well-being and safety of our diverse population. A measure of success is that staff members feel supported, safe, and valued with access to resources that support their own well-being, mental health, and professional growth. So, I'm going to talk specifically tonight about a strategy, ensuring structured opportunities for staff to give feedback on their work environment, support needs, and professional development opportunities. And so, one of the things that Project Aware has funded, and you've talked, you've heard me talk about the grant, is a staff survey. Again, as a reminder, here are Project Aware goals, but I want to focus specifically on this survey that we gave last year and this year. So, we have some data to compare. this survey that we gave last year and this year, so we have some data to compare. So the purpose of the study is to understand school staff awareness and attitudes about the student mental health and well-being, explore staff's ability to identify and address student needs, and learn perceptions of availability of programs and services in schools and the community. So I want to emphasize that there were no right or wrong answers, all honest responses were valuable, and, again, with the goal to improve student mental health and well-being. So apart, a little bit about the survey, participation was completely voluntary. You could choose to participate or not, it had no impact on your employment. It was an online survey, about 15 to 20 minutes, and it was completely confidential. And again, we gave it this time last year, and you will see that our responses, this year's responses are in the true green and 2024 in the dark green. So as you look at staff roles, most respondents were instructional staff. In both years, we also included support staff, mental health-related staff, non-instructional staff, administrators, and others. You have all of these slides, I might fly through some of them, but if you have any questions along the way, let me know. I'd like you to notice that the majority, 95 and 96% of those who participated do interact with students. Trainings attended, so respondents reported on a wide range of training they've received since the fall of 2024. Most common trainings reported in '24 and '25 included suicide prevention, crisis response, bullying prevention, MTSS, and noticeably, there were big increases in educator well-being, self-care, and behaviors and support. So you will notice we had a lot more people participate in our well-being and self-care programming. And then the next slide is just a continuation of those trainings. I tried to star them along the way. So this next slide speaks to respondents hearing about Project Aware. And again, you can see that we have gone from 28% to 47%. Why that's important is we want folks to know about opportunities that may be available to them through these grant dollars. Heard or seen messages about student mental health awareness. In both years, around 85% of respondents reported having heard or seen messages about mental health. Awareness of services and supports. In both years, respondents reported a relatively high degree of awareness programs. Staff were aware of mainly those folks who support mental health, so counselors, social workers, therapists, MTSS, SROs, they were familiar with 988, and positive disciplinary approaches. And you've heard me talk about the money that we've invested in positive behavior solutions and, and that impact that it's having. So, mental health environment for students. So respondents in both years reported a relatively positive mental health environment for students. They agreed or strongly agreed that their schools support student mental health and wellness through a variety of practices, with their level of agreement in both years ranging from 63% to 92%. And the biggest increase, I'd like to point out, in 2025 was placing a priority on teaching suicide prevention and awareness. Mental health environment for staff. Respondents in both years reported a relatively positive mental health environment for staff through ratings, though ratings tended to be lower than those reported for students. But they agreed or strongly agreed that their school supports staff mental health wellness through a variety of practices. So I like to point out this slide in particular because this was new this year. We added this through a partnership with the business department and HR, just wanting to make sure people are aware of the Noblesville Schools Employee Assistance Program, and also an awareness of the Noblesville Schools Education Foundation Mental Health Reimbursement Fund. You will see they are close to that 64% and 61%. Obviously, we want 100% awareness about the programs that we offer to staff as a benefit. I have a lot of positive feedback with regard to the EAP program. Several people have privately talked to me and wanted to even, several have even offered to give testimonials about how impactful this has been on their lives and their families. So I think that's important to note. This next slide speaks to mental health stigma. So respondents reported relatively low levels of stigma around student mental health. So what does that mean? More than 70% reported that students with mental health challenge would be treated with respect by other students, that students would accept a friendship with someone with a mental health challenge, and that students would encourage someone with a mental health challenge to seek help. And I think that's really important, staff reporting on how our kids respond. Again, just normalizing mental health. School climate. This relates to a very positive school climate in terms of how students relate with their teachers, adults in their school. So staff care about students, students can talk to a teacher or an adult about things that are bothering them. And this also speaks to how students get along with each other with ratings over 90%. So I thought that was really good data. Again, mental health self-efficacy. Both years, respondents reported very high levels of mental health self-efficacy. And what does that mean? That means that's our ability to respond to students with mental health wellness and needs. It means we've given them the language and normalizing and how to react when a student is experiencing, you know, something that's impacting their well-being. So the role schools play in students' well-being, in both years, respondents reported that schools play a large role in varying aspects of student well-being. And perception of school roles in student well-being, in both years, respondents overwhelmingly reported that initiatives to support students' well-being belong in schools and that staff pay, play a role in enhancing and supporting students' mental health. Oh, implementation of activities. So here are a variety of ways that we support student well-being. So the most common being checking in with students and integrating practices into their classroom, which increased in 2025, and I think that directly correlates with the implementation of behavior solutions. Mental health and well-being was supported this school year. So staff and students reported that they, that they were supported in well-being, so that's a pretty straightforward slide. Training opportunities that would benefit staff, staff pointed these out, and then that slide's continued, so you can take a look at the different trainings that they felt would benefit them. And we continue to review this and make, you know, adjustments in what we're going to offer. So I really liked this slide, I thought it was really interesting. Staff feelings the past two weeks at work, frequently, almost always. So in both years, most respondents reported positive feelings at work, ranging from excited, 68%, to safe, 96 and 93%. In both years, less than half of the respondents in most cases reported negative feelings at work, ranging from worried, 20% and 17%, to exhausted, 58 and 51%, which I thought was a lot considering it was August when we took this. So I was like, we need to take care of our people, but I thought that was really good data. It's gone down from last year, the negative response, but I think it's just an important reminder that we need to take care of our folks. And so how staff feel effective at their jobs, I thought this was really fantastic. People report feeling quite or extremely effective at their jobs, and that is an increase from 78% to 81%. And so supporting student and staff well-being, so this survey helps us understand how staff perceive and support student mental health and well-being. The honest feedback gives us, helps us identify gaps and opportunities that we can serve our students. So thank you so much for being a school board in a district that supports student and staff well-being. And if you have any questions, I'll be glad to take it. I always like to end with Maslow's because remember, learning happens in the blue. So we've got to feel safe and we've got to feel cared for in order to learn.
Thank you.
Thank you. You, oh, go ahead, Chris.
You go, you go.
Sure, okay. Awareness of staff support, you said 64% are aware of the EAP. What was the, what did EAP stand for?
Oh, good question, thank you. So the Employee Assistance Program.
Which is?
So that is a benefit to staff that if they need a counselor they can access, up to six sessions.
That's right.
And, and those are part of the benefits that we provide.
And you said that there are a lot of people that wanted to give testimonials about how much that, that's great.
They did, people will come up to me and tell me. Then we also have the Mental Health Reimbursement Fund, so that's a provider that you would choose. So the EAP, you're connected with someone, typically virtually, but HR has a lot of great information about that, and then we also distribute that, so.
Nice, thank you.
Yeah, it's very unique in our district, not so much EAP, but the Mental Health Reimbursement Fund that you could, you know, have up to seven sessions or $1,000 that we would help support you.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's our partnership with the Ed Foundation.
Yes, Ed, yes, of course.
I, I love that the negative stigma around mental health is kind of going away, and that, and that it's recognized that, that it's, that it happens to all of us, and it can happen to anyone, right?
Yeah.
I mean, I think it's, that's, that's huge.
I agree.
It can happen to all of us, and you just never know when it will happen.
Exactly, exactly.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Yes.
Thanks for listening.
Thanks for all you do.
Thank you.
That was a great presentation, thanks.
All right, next up, we have public comment, and we had no one sign up for public comment. So we're moving on to consent items. By a single motion, the board approves the following items or actions which reflect application of board policy in Indiana Code. Those are claims, minutes from our last meeting, out-of-state trips, and the personnel listing for, and personnel listing, and the 2025 ECAs. May I have a motion to approve the consent items as listed? Joe, second?
Sorry.
Misty, yes, thank you. Any further discussion? Joe?
I would like to say something about the donations. We didn't have any of the people that volunteered on a weekly basis.
Right, right.
The volunteers that helped make that program, which is excellent.
Okay.
For the camera.
Yes, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. All right, moving on to action items. First up, we have consumable fees for the '25-'26 school year, and those were public content. We have a list of those consumable fees. Dr. Rich, would you like to add anything?
I've never used this microphone before.
Oh, cool.
Echoing.
I know there's no one in here, but I think I'm supposed to do this for the recording.
Yeah.
Is it okay? Because it's echoing all over the place. Okay, yes, I can speak to this. So obviously, for the first time in a couple of years, the state is now allowing for school districts to recoup some of the costs associated with consumable materials. So here in Noblesville, we worked with our individual schools, our principals, as well as at the secondary level, the department chairs, to identify grade level by grade level and course by course, those items that students use up for those courses and those grade levels that are materials that are not the curricular materials, but they support the delivery of instruction. So examples of that would be things like supplies for labs or projects, supplies that students are using in an art classroom or in a science classroom. Obviously, at the elementary level, there's a lot of hands-on, and so a lot of just what we would call traditional types of instructional materials, construction paper, glue, those types of things that are at a cost to the district. And so the state has recognized that in its move to no longer charge parents for curricular materials, they needed to give schools a mechanism to recoup some of the costs associated with instructional materials that are consumed. So after working with building principals, department chairs at the secondary level, we ended up, we, we calculated the costs associated with all those materials by course and grade level, and then that is what is included now on the report that you received. So we have everything lined out by course and grade level in the proposal that you have.
Okay, thank you. May I have a motion to approve the consumable fees effective '25-'26 school year?
So move.
Joe, second?
Second.
Second by Brett. Any further discussion? Any other questions?
So we've already had a communication that has gone out to parents about, because last year they weren't charged these consumable fees, so parents will now be getting a bill in October for these consumable fees, and I appreciate that the district has worked hard to minimize those, the impact of those fees, and that we're doing a good job communicating. But, so we've already communicated what we're going to be communicating again to explain exactly what those consumables will be, right? Okay. Okay. In like parent square, what have you? Okay. Yeah. Right, okay. And David, I know that we had a shortfall, right? Like, in the past, we've had some, for our curricular fees, we have had a shortfall from what the state has provided us in the past, at the tune of, what was it? I can't remember the.
At the tune of very year-by-year, hang on, several hundred thousand.
Several hundred, yeah. So this will definitely help that shortfall, and we all know with SEA One and things coming up that, so, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, anything else?
Just a simple comment that, you know, just to, we're not just up here blindly or blankedly, you know, deciding that, you know, we're making these decisions and voting on them just to charge everybody, because a couple of us still have students in the, in the school system, too, here in this district, so it's going to impact us as well, just as well as the community.
Well, and life is expensive right now.
Yes, it is. Everything is.
Provisions are expensive, and, I mean, it's hard, yeah.
Nobody's immune.
Right?
So we take it seriously.
Okay, awesome. All right, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Next up, we have the Field Drive properties. We have the two properties for a total of eight acres on Field Drive that we are looking at purchasing. May I have a motion to approve the, moving forward with the, with executing the legal documents related to those properties?
So move.
Joe?
Second.
Okay. Stephanie? Mr. Horner Miller, would you like to talk, say anything about?
I thought you were calling David Stephanie.
You can, yeah.
Well, you looked at him.
I am tired, I am tired, but yes.
Just, you know, in, in summary, of course, you know, we had the opportunity to go into the very in-depth detail on these properties at our work session last month. And so obviously, you know, the just, I think, again, for everyone, the folks at home, we have what I, I think we all believe, an incredible opportunity to acquire two acres immediately, but to set in motion another six, and that is by way of that right of first refusal with the owner that we would execute after your approval tonight. So again, we'd be purchasing two acres there on Field Drive, essentially directly east of our tennis facility, along with six then, hopefully in a few years, as, as that all plays out according to the situation there. So again, with that being said, we, we look forward to the opportunity to build out potentially our, our campus ground area there and plan for the future.
Okay, great. Any other?
We all know the land is at a premium in Hamilton County, and the fact that we've got eight acres right next door to each other, yeah, is pretty remarkable. Yes, for that, I mean, you're a realtor, you know that.
Thanks for that plug.
Well, I mean, you know the, yeah, yeah, so, thanks for pursuing that.
It backs right up to a property that we have, the tennis complex, which is amazing. You know, we can butt right to that and make it very effective.
It's not this property on the picture behind us, correct?
No, not Rolling Hills of Noblesville, yes. All right, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. All right, next up, we have insurance carriers, and we have some insurance carriers listed, our current carrier, new carrier, and the percentage of increase. We have to give Mr. Horner Miller a lot of credit. He really goes out with RFPs to make sure that these insurance rates remain little to no change, if at all possible. So may I have a motion to approve the insurance carriers provided effective January 1st of 2026? Oh, Misty, second?
I'll second that.
Okay, second Brett? Oh, wow, okay. Any further discussion?
No, I think, I thank David for this, this is hard work to sort through these things, and we appreciate your efforts and the forums efforts to make all this work.
Yeah, it was a lot of collaboration. Thank you.
And you mentioned that you really try to find insurance companies to minimize, if you change, if you have to change it, you minimize like the number of people that are included in the, with the network, right?
Disruption, yeah.
Yes, lease network, yeah.
Plus a half of a percent.
That's appreciated.
Other words, 99 and a half percent of folks, current providers will still be eligible under, from Anthem to now United.
That's very high, 99 and a half, is what we said?
That's high?
Yep, yep. Great. Less disruption, that's great, yeah.
And, I mean, your skills and ability on negotiating and shopping are quite impressive because most men don't care about doing that.
Misty.
So, very impressive, David, thank you.
Okay, I disagree. All right. Good job, David, I think that was a compliment.
All those in favor?
Compliments.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. All right, I think we're getting all a little slap happy up here.
I think so.
All right, we have policy adoption, and this is our second read on these policies. The first read was last month. May I have a motion to adopt the attached list of policies as presented for the first read at the August 19th, 2025 regular board meeting, and delete policy D-250, the Teacher Appreciation Grant. May I have a motion? May I have a motion?
Got it.
Misty?
Second.
Second, Stephanie? Any further discussion?
I just have one question.
Okay.
With the, I'm assuming it's gonna be like all the other policies, and when, which one policy references another policy, it's gonna be linked in the online version to that referenced policy? Okay.
You bet.
Okay, anything else?
Once I approve, we'll go through and do all the cleanup on the back end, but you have to approve them first, yep.
All right, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, public comment for non-agenda items, and we had no one sign up. So we're to committee reports. Dr. Hy.
All right, thank you, board, and to Brad for sticking around tonight. Thank you, Brad, good to see you. Hey, so I've got a few things to report out, actually. The last, I'm gonna say forty-eight hours, the school board, myself, and a couple of other members of the team here, were at the Indiana School Board Association Conference in downtown Indianapolis. This conference is something that our board a couple of years ago recommended, that it was important that the full board go and participate in that, and it's been, it's been really good, good time of learning, spending time together, just learning and growing the team. Actually, as part of this year's conference, yesterday, Kristi and I had the opportunity to present about our board, actually, and talk a little bit about the work that this board's done the last couple of years. As I explained to the board when, when we first talked about the idea, I just, I'm just so proud of the work that this board has done, and I wanted to spread the good news and let other, let other districts learn from that, and we, we received quite a bit of positive feedback from that. So again, congratulations, board, on all your, your hard work. You made it, made it very easy to brag about you. A couple of other things here, just to point out from that, several of our board members actually were honored earlier this year, but it was reaffirmed at the conference of individual achievements they've made on their own professional development through ISBA. Specifically, I'm really proud that we found out Kristi was recognized for earning the ISBA Board President's Gold Seal. So congratulations to Kristi for her work to do that. And then one more accomplishment, I'm just gonna reiterate again, Andy, if you'd pull up the photo I sent you really quick. We took a picture in front of the board yesterday, the, the board in front of the board, see? You can't see it, because it's too small, but right above Joe's head is Noblesville Schools in that very tiny section where there's only a few things listed, and that is because our school board is one of only five in the state of Indiana that has earned the recognition of an exemplary, exemplary board through ISBA, and that, that is significant. That takes a lot of work, a lot of dedication, a lot of time spent together, and engagement and intentionality. It does not, it never happens by accident. There are things they have to specifically do to earn that. So again, I'm just very proud of the work of this board. It was great to see that acknowledged very publicly throughout the conference, and we were, we wanted to make sure we captured that moment. So again, congratulations, board, on that. Yes, for sure. A few other things that have been going on or that are coming up, just for the benefit of, of the community, a few weeks ago, the board had the chance to take a tour of our district. We spent an entire day taking a tour to check out our special education programming. And as, as community members may or may not know, special education is very complicated, and it's very complex with a lot of systems and a lot of requirements that go with that. A huge thank you to Amy and Erin for all of their work leading that and putting that together. And the, the premise of the day was we wanted to see the full continuum of services for students from preschool all the way through age twenty-two, which we do provide services for that wide of an age range. So I think it was a great day of learning. I think we, we, we had a lot of chances to see a lot of programs, and we're gonna have some follow-up discussion on that at our next work session here in a few weeks. So again, big thank you to that. This week, it's homecoming week, so on Friday, as, as we always do, I won't tell my story I've always told, but best thing in Noblesville is the homecoming parade. So Friday, all schools, as we've always done, will have a sixty-minute early release, so everybody can get out to the parade. Parade starts at four downtown. Hopefully, the weather's good, I haven't checked. And then the game against Zionsville football game that night's at 7:00 PM. This, new this year, there's a new end zone experience through the, through the Ed Foundation, so if you haven't gotten your tickets for that, be sure to check that out. And then there's also Parade Map, other logistical details on our website, so go check them out there. An acknowledgement for some staff this week is actually Food Service Staff Appreciation Week, so if you see any of our food service staff, just tell, give them a little extra thank you for the work that they're doing. Also recently, we just dedicated the Courtney Cox Cole Golf Center as part of the auxiliary gym down at the high school on the other end of the building. A huge thank you to the Cox family and her Miller backers for their help and support with that project. I personally never knew Courtney, of course, but she certainly was an accomplished athlete, and she certainly left an impact. There were some really touching stories shared that day as we dedicated that space, and we got to hear from some of the golf players right there of the, the positive impact that's made on, on them for practice, so that, that's greatly appreciated. One other set of congratulations, big congratulations to Noblesville High School, our teacher Caroline Hayes, and Noble Crossing Art Teacher Amanda Russo. Noblesville Creates has named Caroline a finalist for Arts Advocate of the Year, and Amanda has been named a finalist for Artist of the Year, so big congratulations to them. Okay, almost done. And then coming up in just a few weeks, this is a year where all schools in Indiana must rebargain their teacher contracts, so that is coming up here in just a few weeks. We're looking forward to that. It's always a great collaborative time with members of our Teachers Forum, so we're looking forward to that process starting. And then last but not least, for, for many folks, believe it or not, fall break is already less than four weeks away. Can you believe that? It has been a great year, but a fast year, so I'm sure everyone's ready to reset and recharge, but it has been an amazing, great school year so far, and that's all I have.
Thank you. All right, Noblesville Parks Board, Joe?
The parks are still open, there's lots of activities, you can go to the website to check them out. Fall coming, it's a great place to take a walk in the park, and I was thinking, Julie, during your presentation, there's probably all of us could enjoy a nice walk, watching the leaves fall. It's so good for our mental health. There's, there's Halloween events coming up, the golf course is still open, and we're just planning a whole bunch of stuff as we get into fall and head into next year.
Okay, all right. Noblesville Redevelopment Commission, Stephanie?
There were two action items at our last redevelopment commission. The first one was a Noble West TIF pledge. The commission had a declaratory resolution to establish the Granary Economic Development Area and Allocation Area. As a reminder, the Granary is a mixed-use development that will include approximately two-hundred-and-twenty market rate apartments, five-thousand square feet of retail space, and a parking garage with two-hundred-and-ninety-five parking spaces. And the other one was an expenditure request in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars to complete a walkway and promenade trails that will run along Mill Creek Road, and that was due to complexity of hydraulic modeling, so they were requesting an extra fifteen thousand dollars to complete that walkway.
Okay, thank you. Noblesville Youth Sports Alliance, Misty?
All right, not a lot to report on. We, so our last meeting for August was, actually fell on the date of the big East versus West football game. So they decided to cancel that meeting, and they just provided all of us an update via email because of that and the light agenda for the day.[1677.04]